I intend to spend a lot of time on it, but we can if the board would like. And then I have some information about our capital plan, which includes our spending for this year and projections, as well as what we're planning for next year and fiscal year 18, because that has also been something that has been discussed as well. And we have a couple, we have two particular projects that we are bringing to the board in the next meeting that we want to make sure that the board is aware of, because they are part of our plans, in case we need to make any adjustments to our plans. So I'm just going to jump right in unless there are any questions about what we're intended to cover. Hearing none, I'll move on. So just on the revenue changes, we've made a lot of different adjustments to this slide since the last time you looked at it. I tried to keep it in the same format, just from a consistency standpoint. But a big change is here now are that more information is known since the legislative session has been completed. And I think a big point to note is the last bullet on this slide, in which the state funds for the 1.06% are included in this version of the budget. The one thing that we have not included, just a point to note, is the results-based funding. That's part of the approved legislation, have not been included in these numbers, because we are still looking for clarification on that. We, first of all, we don't know who's going to qualify or not. Based on the previous year, just they use this as an example, we had six schools that qualified. But the money is, as we understand it, and again, this needs to be finalized, is the money has to go to the schools. So it'll just be a pass-through in our district budget, is what we think might be the case. Meaning that, you know, and it's a fairly large amount of money, it's a couple hundred thousand dollars per school. So a million dollars, in excess of a million dollars using the previous year data, that's six schools would get. So we've got some work to do on that, and so does all those people that need to develop the forms for what that looks like. So just that one component is not included, just as.
When do you think you will hear about that?
I think that the next thing, there is a, there was a school finance meeting, meaning that the Department of Education and the Auditor General team met this week. And I think they're working on finalizing the actual state forms, and we believe that we'll know something in the next week or two about that. But we are talking about, you know, close to $200,000 at each of the schools that would qualify. It is based on test scores, and so that has to be released as well.
So then, decisions on how that money is allocated would be made at the campus level? If those schools receive the funding, how is that, how do they decide how to spend it?
Yeah, that's part of what we're waiting for, some instructions, because it does state that you can use the money to replicate the success at those schools in other settings. So, which wouldn't be spent at that school, but, and I'll just give you a, for example, if there is a thematic unit that is taught at one of our schools that we think is awesome, we might be able to pay that teacher that developed that to teach that lesson to other teachers in our district. That would be an acceptable use of those forms.
So it's not just added to that particular school's budget, I guess is what I.
What we, we don't know.
We don't know, okay.
The, the actual language says it goes, it is directed to the school. But we're not sure what that looks like until we get further clarification from the powers that be. In this case, the Department of Education and the Auditor General.
I think it would be safe to say this, the whole concept was kind of the funding to singular units, like charter units? So it's a performance-like.
It's like performance pay.
It's like that, but a basis school would get a chunk of change, and it's a school. So basis would give us, you know, and so it, it's more complicated when it comes into a system like public schools, where you've got, you know, five high schools or thirty-eight schools, like a.
And they're looking at elementary, middle schools and high schools?
Because then you get some inequities in the school district.
It creates some different dynamics in a, in a system, as opposed to a singular school, right? But it was, it's a, it's a charter model.
And so we're not exactly sure what that looks like, so we didn't include it. But anyhow, that's one component that you'll see as a difference when we do get attention to that this again. So on the expense side, and I should have mentioned on the revenue side, we did make the other changes to be able to afford the salary increase, the 1% MNO salary increase for all employees. And I've got a slide here that'll show you what those were. But remember, we had a budget deficit due to declining enrollment and things like that. I don't want to, I certainly don't want to forget that we actually had to make a bunch of concessions to get to this point. And thankfully, we're able to at least consider that. So we'll get to that as we're looking through this. But on the expense side, we've included the salary increase. We've included the 1.06 teacher-specific pay that was legislatively enacted. And again, that will just be a pass-through. It shows up on the revenue side, and it just needs to be paid out to the teachers. There will be, and we have some specifics about this on the slide, it's labeled as next steps. But it does require a special vote of the board for how those monies are going to be distributed, and a public hearing. So I'll just tease you a little bit about the next step slide. But we anticipate that that, we'll do that during the public hearing for the, for the budget, which is in July, July 11.
Can I ask a quick question? The increase in vacations that we buy back, are those actually people who we have to, we know for sure because they're leaving? Or do we project that on a total liability amount, or how is that calculated?
Yeah, so we calculate that based on a trend of what we're seeing. And so there's a specific amount, and like five pages in, you'll see what the actual dollar amount is. It's $200,000, that's the increase, on the summary of budget estimates page. So it doesn't look like it's part of the presentation, but it's about three or four pages in.
So the amount of time accruing keeps increasing, so we're having to increase what we think we're going to have to pay.
Yes, so two, two increasing factors there. As we give salary increases, it's indexed off the base salary amount, so that is increasing, as well as the accrual is unlimited. So there's more time that is accruing. So the index increases and the accrual is increasing.
Okay, thank you.
And I think one of the things that we're going to get into, just as a transition, the last bullet, this does include some limited reclassifications and some new positions, and we'll get into that specifically. So I won't provide that in any more detail than that right now. So this is kind of what it looks like on a high level. So about $3.2 million worth of new revenue. So lion's share of that has to do with the information regarding, or the decision that we've included in the discussions we had about salary, the salary recommendation. So you have about almost a million five in capital reduction. Plan capital expenditures that won't be realized as a part of this. We increased the amount of money in the Medicaid and public schools amount by $300,000 for next year. And we used half a million dollars' worth of community education cash. I mentioned those things specifically because some of the decisions that we made are based on salary or ongoing expenses. Some of those decisions to fund it are not necessarily guaranteed moving forward, right? There's, there's no guarantee that we'll have a half a million dollars worth of community education cash every year. We took half of the available balance, so we'll at least have, we'll at least have that for another year. But do we have it for a sustainable period of time beyond a future year is something we can't guarantee.
Plus the projection.
It's all predicated on the programs that they offer and.
Right, but there's, they didn't exist long enough that we could see an actual trend. And see if there was a projection or what is expected.
Yeah, so we take, just as a reminder, we're already taking half of the available balance that we, that we project.
But it generates revenue each year, so what is the projected revenue that it brings in every year? In excess of its expense? Have we not looked at that?
No, we have. This is an additional half a million dollars on top of the half that we took. So we take half of their available balance that's projected to be carried on in perpetuity.
But that's two different things. That's what we've done, that's what we've taken. But have we projected what their expected revenue in excess of expense will be for the coming year?
Yes.
And what is that? Well, I'll follow up to it. Like I'm saying, I'm trying, I'm trying to see, because I know it's not, their available balance may not be the same year to year. We can project what our expected revenue, our expected gains will be. To have a reasonable idea to know whether or not it's going to.
It's never not have revenue expressed.
Correct.
Yeah, what, what.
And they may, and there may be, there may, there are some areas due.
And maybe, please correct me if I'm wrong, if I misunderstood. I think what Mr. Maglura was trying to say is that we had already used money from that revenue stream based on those projected numbers, and now we have dipped further into it. Is that correct?
What I'm understanding is we used the excess that was in the bank account, not what we expected to get.
Correct. That's what I understood.
So we use the excess.
Correct. So they have, they have ongoing revenues of about $340,000, and it's expensive about $250,000. Their balance ends up being 571, due to the carryforward from the previous year. And this is the, there's two portions of the community ed budget. This is the one that we use, these are the five cash funds that we're using on a regular basis. So we, the total is 3.8 million dollars, we take half of that amount and we build it into the budget. So over time, it was 3.6, it grew to 3.8. It was 3 million. And one of the reasons that it's changed over time is because we were taking a third of the available balance in prior years, and we upped that percentage to half, because we saw a growing balance in here. So in any given year, we have, what I like to say is a two-year plan, based on this portion of it, that we're using to actually, you, you, two years, it would take us two years to exhaust the balance that, the way we're currently using it. The half a million dollars accelerated that.
Just curious, is any of those excess funds gathering interest?
Yes, they all do. Anything with a positive balance, yes, earned interest. I will say that the county. Interest is very low in the county pool, because it looks, they look like large, large amounts, but it's based on the actual monthly balances that the interest is allocated. And so it varies over time, so it's not necessarily always at that level.
So it's not getting more than a single interest on my side, is it?
Well, on a percentage basis, no.
So you restrict it, where you can put money to earn interest?
Yes. And it's one of the reasons why we are a member of the Valley Schools Organization, because they actually can invest our money in a different way than with the county. And it's like, don't quote me on the mouth, but about 10 times the interest that we can earn from the county.
Right, okay. Sometimes when you go to post LGIP, it costs more to post it than each sum gets, like the salary would.
Just curious, thank you for that information.
Again, so just kind of recapping, so 3.2 million in revenue from those other sources. We've included the expenses there of 3.2 million dollars. So we really have a positive balance right now of $68,000 in our budget projection. And again, that's incorporating all the things that we know at this point in time. And we'll go into a little more detail as we go through this. I just wanted to make sure that your, here's kind of a recap of things that we added to the budget that allowed us to afford the 1% salary increase, but also overcome the deficit. So 2.6 million dollars of additional revenue. And you can see the various options there. Carryforward did increase as we projected, the additional use of the community ed cash, and then the combination of the foregoing the CTE textbook adoption, which was scheduled for next year, and the capital allocation, a small capital allocation reduction is just under a million five. So that's how we got to a positive number, because we were looking at it at a deficit before. Things not included in the budget are, this is the same list that we've looked at over time. So no new information here. And at $68,000, we did not have enough proceeds to be able to take the next NST developed priority of the school-based administration support. We're getting closer, if you look at another option, like front office staffing recommendation, because there could be, you know, some additional carryforward that could allow for that to happen. And I know the committee that worked hard on the front office staffing would love to see that continue, or would love to see that part of the budget, but it's not included in what we're sharing with you today.
So if we have a positive, a projected positive balance of 68,000 rather than deficit, that's great. What happens to that 68,000?
So we would either allocate it to a particular area, or we could add it to our contingency staffing. So that might be one more teacher that we can add. We currently have 12 FTE in teaching contingency, so we can add it to it. So I'm giving you just four examples, I'm not making a suggestion here. And so we would budget for the total amount, we just don't think it's a planned expense. So it would add to our contingency plan, unless it was specifically used for another purpose.
Well, and I guess, and I would request that the email I sent to you yesterday and then asking about additional staff that was projected to be added, and you gave me all that information. I would like to share that with other board members, because a concern I have in looking at this, and which was the purpose to my email, is that I see that the school-level staffing needs aren't being addressed, but it seems like a lot of district office staffing needs are. And I, I just want to make sure that there's a process in place where we hear everybody's concerns at all different levels, and to determine if we can't meet everybody's staffing needs, then how do we decide which staffing needs are taking precedence? So I, and I can't email the other members with my thoughts unless we're in a meeting. So if it's today, we have time, or it's not today, we have time. I would like them to have the information that I received yesterday, and my answer to my question.
Sure, and so the reclassification and new positions are in here, we're going to get to that, I think, next. The only thing that's not in here, and we can certainly provide to the board, is the prior year information that I.
Okay, but everything that you sent me yesterday is in here, even the other two positions that I asked about that you didn't have the information on?
Yeah, I don't, I don't know.
They're, they're in this.
You'll find them, I talked to Jenna about that yesterday.
Okay, okay, go.
The title looked foreign to me, quite honestly.
It's, it's the special intervention.
Oh, okay, okay, yeah, then we will get to them. And so a perfect example of what you're speaking to is that front office staffing recommendation. And I'm just, full disclosure here, I'm a little bit of advocacy on my part, so just take this one as a grain of salt. That is exactly from the schools, and we're hearing that that is, that is a need that needs to be met. And again, this has to do with, we have staffing standards that are established by a number of students on a, on a particular campus. But there are certain things that are expectations that we have. So no matter how many students are at one of our high schools, there's going to be a football team, and a theater club, and a student council. So, you know, it's hard to staff when you, when you're expecting or have that in the past. And so that committee, the work team that Ms. Benson actually led, came up with that recommendation. So it's on the list, it's just unfortunately a little bit further down the list than we were able to include in our budget.
Okay, as long as information I am saying is here, because I guess I'll make up some later about a process where we maybe see how we decide which needs are more important, if we can't give everybody the staffing.
Sure, okay, so the next couple pages that you're going to have in your packet are just more detailed that are part of what we include in the goalbook. So you're going to see the actual maintenance and operations fund, the actual summary of the estimates, and the expenditure summary. I provided that information specifically so that you can see, you know, we have started the development of the actual goalbook. That's how we create this information. And some of this just helps provide, you know, where the priorities are in the budget, especially if you look at the maintenance and operations fund expenditure summary type. You'll be able to see, you know, that there's 95.7 million dollars of the certified salaries, there's 47% of it.
Is this, is this slide in our book?
Yeah, we just, yes, it's coming up in about four pages.
Okay.
But he's, he's talking about the resource pages that are in front of him.
Yeah, so, so I'm actually looking at a page that's titled maintenance and operations fund expenditure summary. Two more pages.
That has page two, not that it's really page two.
It's not, yeah, it's not page two.
Okay.
So you can just see where the, where the budget is broken down. The, so we are, we are projecting 200, a 201 million dollar budget for MNO. And 47.4% of that would be in certified salaries, 16.5 in classified salaries, another 24.5% of that are the benefits. So our total salaries and benefits is 88.4. I bring this up because we have a board policy that says that we shall maintain our salary and benefit percentage greater than five comparable districts. And so we share this information so that we, we know that we're tracking that per the board policy that you've given us of direction. The balance, so the 11.6% is what makes up the, you know, the things that aren't in staffing.
So who are the five comparable districts?
So they are all large K-12 districts in Maricopa County, so Chandler, Gilbert, Paradise Valley, Peoria, and Scottsdale. We will sometimes include DYSAR for informational purposes. When the policy was established, DYSAR was smaller than Scottsdale. Now DYSAR has grown to be larger, and Scottsdale has seen some enrollment loss. So at some point in time, we might, we might switch those two, but DYSAR is not currently one of the five. The last page, or the very next page you're going to see is the classified clerical staffing standard proposal, because that was something that we just spoke about. But again, this is not included in, in our budget, in our plan for the proposed budget at this point in time. Okay, so the next, the section of what I want to present has to do with the reclassifications and new staffing. And at the back of this section, there's going to be some additional information about the actual programs themselves. We shared this in a previous Friday update, but just so that you would have that, you actually have the, what we call our administrative management guideline, our AMG, regarding this, as well as the particular processes. There are three of them that specifically are related to what we call process-driven reclassifications. So the total cost and our impact to the budget is $23,338 out of MNO for these nine positions. You'll see that six of them are within our facilities department, three of them are within our ISNT department. And many of these are from previous decisions that have been made. In the case of the facilities position, and I'm just going to simplify this for the sake of time, if we try and post a position, these positions are 30, range 32 on our salary schedule, and it cannot be filled after a period of time, we change the posting to a range 28, and we pay that person, and fill it with somebody that would not necessarily have the skill set that we would demand of somebody in range 32. So we pay them 92% of the, of the salary that they would be earning as range 32. And after four years of being at that lower range, they take a test, and if they pass, then they, the process moves them back up to the range that they were. So it's an apprentice program. We train them for four years, they're, they evidence to us that they can do the job. We've had several, we've had a couple people, I won't say a lot, but we've had a couple people that have taken the test a number of times, and if that passed, they do not move up in the range until they pass the test. And as a benefit for them taking part in this, three years after they moved up to a 32, they move to a 33. It happens to be this year, every one of those individuals that you see is the move from a 32 to a 33. That's a 2% salary increase for those people. The total impact is $824, not in salary, that's salary and benefit for each of those six people. So all of the process-driven, it's a little bit different for the technology people, but all of those process-driven reclassifications that have, that have been in this district for a couple decades are shown here, and the total impact is $23,000.
So just curious, and forgive my ignorance on this. So when, let's say an electrician moves from 32 to 33, and he gets, or she realizes that 2% increase in total compensation, do they also receive the 1% or whatever was agreed upon by the board in addition? So they're getting really a 3% increase?
In this particular year, yes, they would be getting 3%.
Okay, and then you have the ISNT folks going from like a 38 to a 43?
Okay, so similar process in terms of, so the position probably was a 43, you couldn't hire anybody. One of the problems that we have is that our starting pay is, does not attract employees. And so instead of paying somebody at a 43, we'll bring them in at a 38, similar to, as I just explained with the facilities. And then once they're able to, evidence that they can actually do the work, then they move through the, through the process.
Right, so then they, their positions are tech one, is there a tech two, a tech three, is that?
Yes.
And I'm just trying to relate this to where I work now, the air quality department, where they have an inspector one position, and then some could move to an inspector two position, and there would be a greater pay associated with that.
Yeah, and the range jumps in, within our technology department are greater than they are in other areas.
Right.
So from, going from a tech one to a tech two, you go from a 38 to a 43.
Okay.
The problem that I have with this is we're, I have seen nothing, no documentation, no job study, no actual justification for that kind of a change. There's no job description, there's no comparative data, there's no, we're just saying, well, historically, we have a step schedule, and are, these are the people who are on our step schedule, and now we're going to step them up. And that's not just a couple, it's 2% per range, that's a significant increase on top of, and we're telling others that we don't have that kind of a schedule. For these, at least, I would have to see, for me to support it anyways, that there truly is a purpose that this position is now different in a way that it justifies that kind of change in the business.
And I guess my next question would have been, good to find, what's the difference between this and a salary schedule?
So we have, we have ranges, and when somebody says salary schedule, to me, I think row and column salary schedule. But we do have ranges, so there are ranges within there, but there's just a, a starting salary amount that we publish. So if, if we hire somebody into a range 32, that's the starting, we publish the starting stuff.
Right, so, so someone hiring into ISNT at a tech one position would then hire in with the expectation that if I did this, or this, or had so many years, then I can increase my salary, is that?
Right, and in many cases, they convert the position from a tech three or tech two down to a tech one, because they can't attract anybody with that skill set.
Right, so this is just kind of some food for, for thought. Right. So this is just kind of some food for, for thought. You know, when, when I hired into Deer Valley, we had a salary schedule for certified. And so I could look at that schedule and know that when I had this many years of experience and I completed this many hours of P D or had completed this much extra training, then I could look at that and I would know this is, this is where I'll be. Similar to what we have here with the reclassifications, if I'm understanding this correctly. But that's not something that we have in place any longer. And I don't know about M and N, um, but for our certified, other than the fifty dollars out of tier base paid for each hour of, you know, for each credit hour that you receive. So that's just, um, I guess just an observation.
And I guess I would, my turn to agree with you. Um, I, I would just add that, um, I think that, I don't understand the difference. It sounds like you're saying you're having a hard time attracting and retaining employees. So we need to put this in place. And, and I would think we have a similar situation going on with teachers right now. And we've put nothing like this in place to attract and retain. And so it's, it seems like, a- and, and we say the reason for that is we don't have the funding. But we do have the funding to attract, to put programs in place to attract and retain employees in some areas. We don't have the funding to do it in others. So I guess, I mean, are you finding we have a bigger turnover and a harder time retaining, um, I S and T and electricians than teachers? I would like to see maybe some comparative data on that.
So, so Jim, when somebody comes in as a, a tech one, uh, their, their capabilities of, I, I don't know what a tech two and a tech three are. But they're, it, it's, they're doing a, a lot, a lot more broad, um, duties. So they're able to be utilized more. So that would be like, um, you're hiring them in, they're apprentice, and I can't really forget the computer part, the electrician I can do. So I come in and I'm, I'm not an electrician, but I wanna be an apprentice. So I may come in and say, I just wanna, you know, I wanna learn. Or maybe I don't. But when I'm identified personally and then professionally, then I'm now like a master electrician. So I can do the whole project instead of just the this part. So to me, it's not, it, it's, and I'm not saying that any, any of us are getting, well, I know any of us are getting paid enough, but I'm not saying that we have enough money to pay everyone with their work. But it's, the comparison that I would make to a step would be a teacher in the classroom to a master teacher or to a, um, like a curriculum, um, specialist. So they do get paid more. Not saying that teachers should get paid more.
Not in this district, unless they're getting attendants.
Well, if you're a master teacher, you'd get paid more than them.
Not, that was with the TAP model that was in.
Well, uh, what?
It was with the TAP.
Well, we have the TAP model, but if you, correct. But if you are an instruction, uh, what your department does to help teachers.
They have an agenda for that.
They get an agenda for that. So all I'm saying is that, um, I, I think that when you're hearing a certified, uh, or the certified schedule, the one from the tech one to tech two or the ranges, that it's, it's different than the years of experience of a teacher. I'm not saying that we have that down pat, but I, I just don't think we can compare.
But it wasn't just years of experience, it was years of experience plus your additional training.
And you have certifications to this day. You're certified to teach different things.
But I get that. But I guess what I'm saying is that if you are a highly qualified, um, social studies teacher in high school, you are gonna teach your social studies class in high school. You're not gonna be expected to do someone else's duties. You're not gonna be ex, unless you're the department chair. You're not gonna be expected to, to do extra things. Whereas if you go in as a tech one and you've moved and you get, um, your, uh, abilities, you're going to be expected to do this much work. And then you're gonna be in charge of that much work.
I guess I don't agree with you because when you run any business, okay?
Mm-hmm.
You have a need for certain levels of staff at varying degrees. And, and, and you have a certain amount of work, like in a, in the accounting department. And so what was done by accounts payable this year does not need to be done by a C P A next year. That would still be an accounts payable level of work. Um, I know people that work like in, in the, in the construction industry and what have you, and you have different levels of trained professionals. They will put as many low-paid employees on the job that can possibly do the low-paid work. They're not going to put out the higher level because the job becomes less profitable because those people are, so, so if we only need this many people at a level twenty-eight this year and the work's getting done, we might only need that many people. And the, the second difference I would make, I, I guess, is, issue I would take with what you said is if we look at the function of a school and let's just say we couldn't retain electricians, they all up and quit. We could actually hire an electrical company and pay a contractor to come out and do the work. We could not call a temp agency and say, send a teacher in ASAP.
But we, we.
I mean, I, I mean, you, I'm not saying we should do it, but there's also a sub shortage. That's why the teachers are on sub rotation.
Yes. Thank you.
The, when we have a level forty-three position or a, you have your range there and you're unable to fill that, so then you determine, you, the decision is made to lower it to a thirty-eight to bring somebody in and put this in the, put this program in place. How do these folks know that this is the process that they are allowed to follow? How, how do they know that this is their journey?
So, um, so I've provided that information. It's gonna be about four pages in. So the administrative management guideline is, um, you'll see the very first thing on, I apologize, I know I shift back and forth between this, but it, uh, looks, it'll look like this.
I got it. Okay.
And then behind each one of those, uh, or behind this particular one page, A M G, you have the actual, um, programs themselves, the criteria, um, there's some background. So, so it's documented.
And this is new documented?
No, the, the, the A M G gets updated, uh, frequently. Um, so it might be, it might have been revised. Uh, but the actual, uh, written documentation, uh, from the nineties.
Sorry, if I could just have a couple more. Apologize. Um, so this program has been around since the nineties. They, this is part of our A M Gs. So if, if we do not fill these positions or do we do not approve this reclassification, we have, in effect, trained employees who now are able to go do these jobs other places because they have the skills for a higher level position where they can earn a higher salaries than in Deer Valley. And we have not upheld our policy.
It's not a policy.
Okay, our guideline, our guideline. I apologize for the wording.
That, that would be fair.
Thank you.
The, the, the one part I would like to make is that we don't know that to be true. We don't, we don't know that to be true because we didn't.
We don't know which part to be true.
That they have a, a higher skill than what, what they would make in another district for a higher pay. I don't wanna take this to being about people or that type of position, but it, it, it comes down to a business sense. If we, if, uh, like in, in the case of facilities, from what I understood, from what I looked at, what I've read, is they do come in as an apprentice. They actually learn more. They actually do have a criteria. They pass tests. They do certain things to get there. Um, that's not an uncommon practice when it comes to, to that type of thing. You, you have a thirty-two going to a thirty-three. That's, that's, um, that would be in line with a, that type of a training program. But when I look at I S and T, you're, you're telling me we're hiring someone who doesn't have a skill set as a tech one. So now we want to put this tech one as a, we wanna simply increase our salary. I get that they may have, uh, have gained new skill sets and that's wonderful. And if we have an open tech two position, it would be great for them to apply for it and then take that advancement. But in all positions, um, you know, you have, say we hire a, a secretary with, with no, uh, experience and she comes in and she then, she, her typing skills go through the roof and she learns Excel and Word and PowerPoint and she's awesome and she's doing great. We don't say, okay, you are now a highly skilled secretary. We're gonna give you a fifteen to twenty percent raise.
Correct.
What we do is we, we, their, their position opens up. They apply for it.
The difference is that that secretary position that that person was hired into was not originally an administrative assistant position that was lower because they.
He was hired into a tech one.
Okay, but that's not what Jim said a few months ago.
But we have nothing, that's what I'm saying. We have nothing to show us, we have no, no job study to show us that they were hired in to look at anything different. This has been done multiple years in a row. And last year I did ask the question of, can I see a job description? And I was provided one. And I said, show me what skills are in addition to this job description. And they were written in the job description. So we need to, I think we need to look at a, a realistic, are they truly, are, are we simply saying this? Or, or do we have, we need a tech one position? What are we paying that tech one position? What are our comparable districts paying a tech one position? Are we in line?
So I guess I misunderstood, Jim. Could you clarify for me? Is that, I thought you said that what often occurs and, or maybe in these positions, so, so do we have documentation that four years ago or whatever the timeframe was for these positions, that these positions would have originally been a forty-three four years ago or a forty-nine four years ago or whatever the timeframe is?
Were we recruiting for a, of, what's a forty-three, a tech three, tech two?
So, were we originally recruiting for a tech three and we lowered it to a tech one?
You know, I can, I can find out. I don't know that to, to be true, but we could, we could incorporate that into the plan if that would help kind of.
Okay, I think that is important. I think that is important because I think part of, well.
I think we need to know what the district's need is. Do we need, do we need a tech one? Do we need a tech one now? Do we need a tech two? Do we need a tech two now? Um, you know, do we need that someone, you know, software engineer to consent? Uh, what is, what is that new position that we, um, what is the comparable districts paying for that position? Are we, I just think, you know, I, I believe, actually, we, we, we were, I think when we were talking about, uh, reclassing a secretary in January, you said you would never reclassify someone without actually seeing a job study and what that would look like. I, I like, that's responsible. We do need to have a job study and see what that looks like. But what are the needs of the district?
Right.
I, I, I'm just wondering, so are we, um, going to require this from food services? Um, I don't know when, uh.
That would be a good idea.
Food service want, well, I, I don't know how many move from, from, uh, uh, a server to a cashier. I mean, I don't know if we're requiring.
I think it, I think we should. I mean, I think we should. I, I, I think it would be really silly to say we only needed one cashier this year. This year we need four of them. I mean, unless there's a reason, like we have four more registers.
I'm saying sometimes they go from the dishwasher to the food server to the head cashier.
That's a good question.
So they're moving up.
Depends on what.
That's a good question. Do they apply for it? Or do we just promote without one?
They, they, the positions are posted in terms of, they apply.
I guess that I, I would ask in this process, which is that we, you know, maybe this process needs to be modified so that if we are actually trying to hire a tech three, um, and we can't do that, that there needs to be a way of tracking that you, you know, you don't get rid of that position. It stays there and stays vacant and you create an apprenticeship. So, so we know that we couldn't fill this position. Like we know, Jenna knows, Jenna tells us we can fill this. Just a suggestion. I know, I apologize.
I think we have two, it seems to me that we have two, um, different issues here with the reclassification. We have the apprenticeships, which sounds like it's mostly facilities with the electrician, um, plumber, teacher, things of that nature, where those folks hired in with the expectation that they met certain requirements and they would be reclassified and receive a higher pay because they have a higher skill set. And then we have the issue with positions that are labeled as a, like a tech one or a tech two or a tech three. So, and to Ms. Fisher's point, I, I know the air quality department, if you start in as an inspector, then you don't move to inspector two unless there's an inspector two position vacant.
That's what I think.
And then you apply for it and everyone has an opportunity to apply. And then, once you move into a new position, at least at the county, your probationary period starts over. Um, all of those things will, will reset. So if I moved to a different position with higher pay in the county, I would now be a probationary employee again. So, um, I'm not saying we should do that. I'm just saying that's how it's done there.
I have another criteria.
So.
Maybe we could just have an overview of what the apprenticeship program is. And what criteria? What tests do they have to take? Cause I understand some of these are attached to a test. And by all means, if they pass that test, you know.
Then they should be rebooked.
Right. They, that's, that's the equivalent to that job growth, like you'd said, with the fifty credit hours. So there, I think we're talking about multiple different things. So maybe we need to schedule a session to, to, to look at this.
So I, I just captured some notes and I know that we have a little more information, so I don't wanna get too bogged down in that. Um, but, uh, I, I think one of the things I captured were, uh, are the I S and T positions posted as a, as a lower position when these particular individuals were, were, um, filled into the ranges that they are currently before being reclassified? Um, I, I've heard on multiple occasions about, uh, maybe a job study or a salary comparison, job description differences. We do have congru, the, the next, I think the very next slide is gonna be, um, other reclassifications. So these are just the process-driven reclassifications and there are multiple, uh, departments that participate in that. We also have a, a formalized process for reclassifying, which is not process-driven.
I think what would also be helpful for me is like if we look at the five districts we compare ourselves to and this might be too much for this year, but how many secretary ones do we need, secretary two? You know, for all positions, I just said, because what is the business needed? Because when I read is reclassifications have to do with the position, not individuals, but it feels like it has to do with individuals and not the business. Because like I said, you will need so many lowest level employees to get work done, so many at this, so many at this. And that tends to stay constant without a dramatic change in the organization. And, and so, and then when, you know, in a position for advancement opens, by all means, somebody in the lower.
Right.
But it, but it needs to be the position. It's like we just don't change our need. And now this needs to be done by somebody with a much higher skill set that was being done by somebody with a lower skill set. So.
Okay. Um, perfect. All right. I appreciate you guys, the, the input on that. Um, okay, so the next, uh, slide, it has to do with not process-driven reclassification, but just reclassifications. Uh, so this is where a supervisor will say, hey, I know, um, I, I have a particular position that I've, that isn't part of a formal process, um, but I wanna, uh, complete the paperwork to, uh, have this person be considered for, um, for, uh, reclassification. All of these are from non-M and O funds, so they would not, uh, contribute. And these are some of our entrepreneurial, uh, uh, funds. So you see food nutrition, um, the, uh, transition from school to work, uh, grant, and then community ed. Uh, those are all, uh, recommendations from their supervisor and they, uh, we are including them in the budget, although they have no M and O impact on the budget.
I guess that they do have an impact on the perception that people are treated equitable. So for me, it's more important that there's an equitable process because I know like transportation, they don't have an ability, say, to produce the revenue that community ed does. I mean, they would have no ability to, they're not gonna be able to like charge people to take the bus or something so that they could reclassify themselves. So I don't, for me, it doesn't matter so much in that what fund it comes out of is that it's equitable to all employees. I know we have a problem with what we pay bus drivers, for example. And, and, and they're not, uh, like I said, a department that's gonna, they're not going to turn a profit on what they do, but it's just, you know, it, it has a real value to our district because our students show up at school because of their department. So i- if, if we have some type of ability to reclassify, it, the same opportunity should exist for all departments.
And it does. So the A M G is not specific. I just broke these. So the AMG is not specific, I just broke these out separately, so these are not process driven and the only ones that cabinet recommended were those that were not funded from MNO because we had, again, we had a budget deficit, we didn't think it was appropriate to even consider reclassification that would affect the MNO, but all positions were, were considered.
I think it would help if we had the criteria, was the criteria behind each of these?
And the criteria is in the AMG and, and there's an actual form.
Specifically, you said that they were looking for some person, there must have been some reason, a criteria, but this is these change.
Sure, there's an actual form that gets completed, so we can provide the forms for each of those reclassifications.
I think the, the column on the far right is kind of an abbreviation of what we have, but somebody's.
That's me. It's the bank.
So yeah, we, we, we'll just give you the detail from the far right column, because like the first one, she's eliminating a worker and combining two together and.
So then it's additional duties being put on this individual, because that, that makes a major difference. If it's, if it's additional duties or a change in something versus I'm just going to increase this position to increase it.
So, so what we'll do is we'll, we'll get you the detail, even more detail than what's in the far right column.
That would be helpful.
Okay.
Perfect.
Yeah, I, I, just since we used it as an example, this is actually the same person that filled two positions and all of a sudden they're actually doing the, the same position and we have no way of knowing, I, I mean, the, the position has been melded into one.
So you eliminated a position too, so that that would actually be a savings to the district?
Yeah, and there are some savings, I did not include the savings, so there's a savings from the custodian position that you see there, eighty-six, I did, that's not included in that seventeen thousand, seven sixty-eight. So I, I, I think, just in the scheme of things, and I'm not trying to advocate here, these are limited, we, we, we don't, we, we, we look at these in great detail in cabinet to be able to say, we're only going to provide those that we think truly meet the criteria because we, we definitely don't want it to be an inequitable choice that is being made. So I think we just need to provide that information to you guys. So I won't go into any more detail with this. The next slide actually has the, the new positions, and so there's two hundred and fifty thousand dollars from MNO and then thirty-five, almost thirty-six thousand dollars from community ed. And when I'm quoting these numbers, that's the grossed up number, includes the benefit. So we're not paying thirty-five thousand dollars for the community ed position, have to be a secretary, that's the salary and benefit cost, so we're seeing the projected cost for, for that position. The science center clerk is a half time position and the percentage, I might have to look at Dr. Galia, and I think it's a three hundred percent increase in the science kits that we deploy and we just can't handle the workload, we've been doing it with temporary staff, we either have to make a change and reduce the number of science kits that we rebuild and send back out to the classrooms, which we don't think would be great for an instructional setting, or we need to actually provide the additional staff. This started as a one point oh request, we, being cognizant of the budget deficit, we reduced this to a half time FTD. Community ed, we've talked about that program and its continued success, they need some additional clerical or secretary help to be able to enjoy the successes that they have, so that's a new position, one that does not exist.
Didn't we just put a new one in last year?
That's what I thought too.
We either put a new one in or we up several to it.
I, I will provide the list because I did, in response to the email I got from Ms. Tweedy, I'll, I'll provide the list from last year.
Can, can we go back up to the science? Is this because of the new adoption or are you talking about FOS kits?
I'm sorry, these are FOS kits.
So we've had FOS since when?
Gail, you're going to have to help us with this.
Well, since I was in the district.
The center itself was initially founded, developed, education foundation, I believe in two thousand.
Speak louder.
In two thousand and so, and at that point it was for grades one through six. Since then we've expanded down kindergarten, we've, with the changes in what, what aligns to our standards, have changed grade levels and added in and then we are of course expanding to seventh grade next year, although at this point in time the seventh grade FOS kits will be deployed to the campuses, but all others K six, including the live organisms, are all housed through the science center and it's an in and out all year long with kindergarten through sixth grade teachers.
So when did the workload increase then on restocking FOS kits? I guess I'm trying to.
With the addition of FOS kits down at kindergarten, that was one.
Okay, and when did that happen?
That would have been, I believe, two, last year, so it would have been fifteen, sixteen school year.
Okay, and then you said seventh grade was the other one that we had?
We'll be, we'll be going into next year.
That says next year?
That says next year, but the, as I said, we shifted FOS kits between grade levels and then had to change. So there's been addition of FOS kits to certain grade levels and then just the number of schools that are finally utilizing this certain, so when we made that change in two thousand and twelve, a lot of our schools wanted to hold on to their FOS kits and over the past five years, we have finally turned that corner where our schools, we have them all now and we are replenishing them and getting them in and out. One of the other challenges is that we have some schools and teachers who send back kits in a fairly decent manner and then other schools and teachers that do not, and so the amount of time that it takes to refurbish a kit and get it turned around and out again is different based on that. And, and we do address that with our, our schools, our principals and our teachers so that we can try and reduce the kits that come back in poor condition.
So these are the people that restock the consumables, then how many people do it right now?
One.
One.
One, okay, okay.
But you've been using temporary help to add to that one person.
So this is a, okay, well, that makes a little more sense because when I first read it, I thought you were talking about the new science and getting out the new materials and like, but that's a temporary situation, you're only going to send that out.
Has anyone ever tracked over the course of time? Because I remember one day we started the science center and I always did my house kit in the sixth grade and I know Kim Brun was, or Brunz was in charge of it and.
She was once part of that.
Yeah, and so she always got everything out immediately, right away. And I have heard from some teachers after she retired for electric district that they are now being told, well, you can have this kit at this time, doesn't necessarily want to be the right thing. So I would be curious as to, you know, when we first started, how many schools utilized it compared to now, how many teachers or classrooms utilize it, because I've always expected it with fair enough teachers who didn't use FOS at all.
I think we can show at least for the last two years.
I would be interested to see that, but that would be a good thing because I know, I relied, I mean, I taught FOS and so I relied on getting those kits on time and yeah, some people don't return them in their own shape, but not, those people just.
And then I guess the next question would be the two behavior ones below that, were those the two job descriptions I sent?
It's, it's, it's in these.
It's in these, so which person in these are we talking about?
Gail, help us out.
In, in, it was probably four weeks ago in, in the Friday update, we, we discussed, we, we shared the, the changes for special education next year and a pilot in the very Goldwater region for two things. One of them is a, a level C classroom that our teachers and our campuses and our principals would have the availability to identify kiddos who the campus itself did not have capacity to handle for a certain period of time and through the IEP change, a child would go to the host campus, which would be Village Meadows, and be with a certified teacher and two behavior techs to build their capacity to be in a gen ed setting and earn their way at Village Meadows into gen ed classrooms so we could continue to build their capacity and then get them back to their home campus as quickly as possible. Our timeframe for that was a child would be there anywhere from a quarter to a semester to a year, but no longer than that. In addition to the work that the post-campus Village Meadows would be doing with the children that would be part of that program, we would be providing the campus, the home, the, the home school campus support and training so that they would build their own capacity to handle a child who has whatever specific behavior was a problem for their campus and once we built their capacity, have the child's capacity.
Is this an ED program?
It is not necessarily an ED program.
Level C, but is it for ED students?
It, it is for any special education child who is exhibiting behaviors that a campus has identified.
So you would combine ED students with autistic students at this point?
I'm not saying that at all. I am saying that this particular classroom would be for K one, two children that a campus has identified we are struggling with behaviors for this child. It would very well be a child.
My question is, we have an entire school, we have this, we're not, I know, I understand that, but a, a large portion of that school is empty and, and, and why aren't we utilizing that school and, and having it service for these purposes?
Could, could you provide information?
First of all, I, I think this, this was set up in a regionalized manner, so, so we, we don't want to take, we don't want to do an immediate intervention and, and take a kid from Anthem to New River, I mean, to, from Anthem to, yeah, that.
Vista Peak.
Vista Peak. Sorry about that, maybe Sean is. So, so this, this is the regional program that we want to house at Village Meadows to do those fast interventions to, to deal with what Melissa and the teachers and the principals and Gail and her team have said are, is the greatest problem that we have delivering effective special education services to our kids. So we, this is what we talked about in January, this is what we've been telling you about that we're, that we're working with a team across the district to, to, to put together and the positions that you are talking about, circle those right there. Pilot Behavior Program Village Meadows, that's, that's those positions that you were talking about.
Okay, so a question, are we going to have a whole session on reclassification and these positions?
Well, I'm almost wondering if we need to, because we have the rest of the budget to get to.
We have a whole lot more to go through in only fifteen minutes.
I just, and I just want to request some information really quickly upon the call in. I would like to, over the last, since Vista Peak opened, I would like a history on how much we're paying in private placement, then I would like to know what the total operating expenses are at Vista Peak and how much money we're saving by not having those students in private placement. I would also like to understand the distinction between how we're deciding when a child would be level C versus level D appropriate, specifically for behavior and stuff. And I guess I would want to understand this program because I would be extremely concerned. I know with extreme cognitive impairment, there's behaviors with autism, there's impairment and with ED, there's behavioral impairment.
Well, in order to autism, autism children.
Defying best practices to combine those students together, I would be horrified for the students if that were taken in place.
It seems like this is, is something we really need to work into more and more depth.
Well, I know, but it's, it's part of reclassification and I thought we'd already agreed to have a session on that.
Yeah, why don't we, whatever information you need.
I would just like that information.
Yeah, but let's, let's.
I think I've got what you were.
Well, let's memorialize anyone who has a need on this, on this area, let's get it in an email, in to Dr. Vee or, or Jim or both, and then this is going to have to be something that we discuss further.
I'm not really sure why Dr. Vee pointed at me when he said intervention.
Because we had, we had talked about it, I, I.
I know, I'm just kidding.
Yeah.
Okay.
We, we collectively talked about it in January.
Okay, let's, let's go ahead and move on.
Okay, so, so just so you know, the next couple pages, they're just all the details. So what, what I showed you in the, in the slides were what we recommended, you'll see there's going to be a lot more requests, there's some color coding in that, there's been two pages worth of, and so it's going to be duplicative, but you'll see that there were more requests than we actually brought forward along with all the process stuff, so you can skip through like the next ten pages or eight pages until we get to the preliminary classroom site fund.
And thank you for providing all of this.
Oh, yeah, no, no problem, I just thought, you know, do we just have it as a reference and might be able to use this in, in future discussion as well. Also, the classroom site fund, as it says up the top, we're scheduled to preview this June thirteenth, we adopt it typically the very next meeting, so June twenty-seventh, so I'm calling this the preliminary, I, you know, I did, pre, pre-preview, I don't know, the, but the classroom site fund is going to go up from three hundred and thirty-two dollars per weighted student count to three hundred and sixty-seven dollars per weighted student count. There's an additional amount that was included in the salary recommendation, there'll be a one-time payment, that'll be paid to, to teachers along with their performance pay in June and that will be an additional nineteen dollars per weighted student count because that's one-time money, it's not anticipated that it will increase, so that amount is not included in here. But this has basically the breakdown between the three funds, base salary, performance pay and what we call the menu money. And I think the thing that is a, a point of conversation, part of the salary recommendation increased the flat dollar amount because we provided for a hard to fill addenda for seventh and eighth grade math and science positions and we increased the percentage raise for teachers so that their raise would be one point five percent instead of what was scheduled to be one point three, two percent. So those two dollar amounts increased the, the, the hiring schedule, the dollar amount out of menu money was one point five million dollars, now it's approaching two million dollars and so the percentage went from seventy-two point three percent of, of Fund thirteen, the menu money goes to teachers this current year, next year it will be seventy-six point five percent. That still remains, uh, uh, still includes a balance of district initiatives and I, I don't know how much we wanted to get into this today, but two more pages in provides the detail of what that looks like for this year, this current year. I don't see that significantly changing, although there might be more of an emphasis on one curriculum area over another from year to year based on, you know, just the, the cycle that we maintain reviewing curriculum materials. But essentially, there's a lot of professional development that's incorporated in here along with the curriculum instructional, I'm, I'm sorry, continuous improvement specialists that, that are funded for some personnel that, that are in here, but also a lot of assessment is in here, so School City, Canvas, all funded from those district initiatives. So I'll leave it with, at that, in terms of, if, if the detail, I don't know if there's any additional information, just wanted to make sure, you know, it's already been captured in some ways in our salary recommendation, just hasn't been formally approved by the board and we anticipate that that would be done in June.
And this is a comprehensive list of the district initiatives?
This is the current list of all of the district initiatives.
This is what I'm looking at?
Yeah, yeah, for, for this year.
Okay.
We're still building the one for next year, but it's going to be very similar. And, and we'll provide that information when we present it at the briefing. Okay, no more questions about that, I'll move on to travel expenditures. This, this was a question that was raised, so we just provided it, the MNO total is a hundred and fourteen thousand, six hundred and two dollars for fiscal year sixteen, we wanted a complete year of, of information. When we've removed the to and from schools, so any itinerant staff, we have to pay mileage reimbursement from them to get from their first work assignment to any other work assignment that we have during the school, uh, uh, school day or their work day. The total amount of MNO travel was sixty-eight thousand dollars and the majority of that came out of the school CIT budgets.
The CIT budget?
Fifty-four percent of that sixty-eight thousand came out of the school CIT allocations.
So those would be trips to conferences of professional developments, things of that nature.
Could I have, can I get a breakdown too of how the MNO reading funds are spent? Thank you. Cross it off your list.
Cross it off, so.
Okay, so behind this in your packet, you'll see the detail of all of the conference information in the, the next two pages. Uh, and it's every fund. So, but, you know, I, I just want to make sure that you have all of those because I'm only reporting the MNO amounts here, but there are certainly other funds that go into it. And we, what we've, uh, provided here, uh, includes not only the conference registrations, which would be, um, uh, the sixty-three oh two expenses, but the travel itself, the sixty-five eight.
Is, so is there any travel that would not be considered part of MNO?
Yes.
What would that be?
It, it's on this, on, on, on this list.
Who has it here by your funds? These are your title funds, these are your, these are your three oh one, one fourteen, oh oh one is your MNO.
And in just to save any time, we'll go to a function and discuss, because you can explain all.
I'll bring, I'll bring the chart back out soon.
Okay. Um, and I think, uh, I'd like to, uh, a few more slides here. Uh, so, uh, there's been some conversation around, uh, capital. So I just kinda wanted to give you the lay of the land, uh, what we totally see capital for this year, uh, and for next year. So, uh, seven point three million dollars was the capital budget limit in this year's budget. That includes three point one million dollars of, uh, Prop one, two, three money, uh, part of our plan from fiscal year sixteen. So, uh, I, I won't try and get too far in the weeds in that. Um, the actual budget, uh, six point six million dollars, we think that the expenses will be about six point five, uh, at this point in time based on, uh, the trend that we see. We have two initiatives that we need to bring before the board for their consideration. One, um, are the, uh, I think I want to say the addition, but I think it's an expansion of Paxton Labs at, uh, at, at the campuses. Uh, that's a hundred and fifty thousand dollar initiative, about a hundred thousand dollars in the actual lab modules and about, uh, a, a projection of about fifty thousand dollars worth of improvements that are needed to, uh, to be able to make that happen at both Deer Valley Middle School and Desert Sky Middle School. Uh, the Desert Sky Middle School modernization project will do most of those improvements. Uh, it's included in the scope of work, uh, to, to create that space. Uh, so most of the, um, uh, most of the facility changes are at Deer Valley Middle School. And then another item that we're going to actually preview on May thirtieth is the replacement of our HR management system, our software. And, uh, there are some one-time startup costs to convert from our current provider to, uh, a new provider. And there are some delta in the annual, um, obligation that the district would have. That is yet to be determined, but we anticipate that those would be, um, uh, part of the expenses. So we would actually spend six point eight million dollars in fiscal year seventeen. Adding that carry forward the difference between the seven point three and the six point eight, uh, to, um, the capital budget. And I'm showing some of the other, uh, adjustments we made, just to make sure that they're not forgotten. Uh, the one point two million dollar textbook adoption that was, uh, suspended or delayed. Uh, the capital allocation, we made a small adjustment, uh, there as well at two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Uh, we would have three million dollars of available capital, uh, of which we believe there'd be two point nine million dollars, uh, that we would, uh, allocate to various budgets, leaving an unallocated amount of just over eighty-eight thousand dollars. Uh, again, because we're dealing with some projections here, we don't know if that's, it could be greater than eighty-eight, it could be less than eighty-eight thousand dollars. But that's, uh, all of the proceeds that we.
So where's that, where's the, you're saying, you're saying that your thinking org and that the two point nine is what we'll need to spend. Where's that gonna get spent? Cause I'm not seeing, it doesn't add up to two point nine.
The, the very next page has that detail. So far, right column fiscal year eighteen. So five hundred and sixty thousand dollars, uh, is the school budget. The lion's share of it, the one point seven million, is the IS and T. And, and, uh, about one point six of that are just license renewals.
These are just, just license renewals?
Well, one point six of the one point seven is, yes.
At the bottom, the one point seven?
Yeah. That's a lot. Wow. Okay. And then by, I'm just curious, so how come we need to update the, um, human resource software was the problem?
Um, so it was cited in the efficiency study, um, that, that we, uh, don't have some, uh, electronic means to be able to share information between our current system and our financial system. So HR and payroll could, uh, enjoy some efficiencies if we were able to, um, make some changes. There are also some other benefits, and we'll get into the specifics of that, uh, at the preview on, on next Tuesday.
Okay, I just want to understand that question.
Do, do you have a copy of that efficiency study?
I think Jenny and Darcy probably need that efficiency study, like haven't received it already.
Okay. And so, um, last slide I have is really our next steps, kind of what we, uh, anticipate the, the, that we need to do. So we do need to incorporate, uh, some board input into the next draft, um, you know, what that needs to look like. There is, uh, uh, as I mentioned, the classroom site fund, uh, would be previewed on June thirteenth and then adopted on the twenty-seventh. We would propose the expenditure budget on the twenty-seventh. That gives us the ability to actually publish it. And, uh, we would have some specific notices. We'd have the, the actual budget notice, a truth and taxation notice, assuming that we are going to incorporate some adjacent ways, which we plan to do for the next commodization project. We'll have to also, uh, provide the required notice for that, uh, that one point zero six percent increase for teachers. That teacher-specific legislative requires a public notice. The public hearings would actually take place on the, on July eleventh, uh, and then we would adopt the budget, um, on July eleventh as well. So, um, that's really all the information. There's a bunch more included in your packet. And they were just intended to be resources if we needed to use them. Um, so, uh, there are things like what the salary increase was for fiscal year seventeen by employee group. How we allocated the Prop one twenty-three money, uh, for, uh, for our employees. Uh, there's the district, uh, spending report from the auditor general. So there's a bunch of information that just, again, intended to be, uh, a, a resource for you if, if we needed it for any other discussion. I, I will, uh, crossing you the, the, the fold-out that you see there, uh, I think it might be the last page, is the auditor general spending report, and it has three years of history. So you can kind of see where trends are, um, uh, for the, the five comparable districts as well as ourselves and the state. And, um, so just, uh, you know, good information in terms of how we are spending our money currently. And, and again, this is from the auditor general report, so it's not, this is not something, I compiled the information, but it's straight from the actual, um, report that they, they, they put together. So that's all the information.
That's this chart, sorry?
Yes.
Sorry, I've got stock in my chart and forth.
So that's everything that I prepared, uh, to share with you. I'm happy to answer more questions, um, or, uh, continued dialogue.
Well, I, I just have a couple of requests from you. Have any, well, I guess one question is, have any funds been moved into capital for any of these? In other words, what, have we moved funds into our capital from other funds? And if so, can we get a list of what and what, what was removed? Have we transferred?
You, that, that, it's illegal to, I, I.
I, I know, but are we, are we using other funds for capital resources or?
Oh, oh, are we, yeah, are we spending capital dollars out of other funds? Yes. Yeah, we can't move the money, but, yeah, so, uh, so capital.
Precisely, better.
Capital expenses from other than capital.
Yes, yes. And if so, why? Are we, why are we not, um, utilizing our capital? Is there, is there a shortfall there or, um, what's the purpose? Just, just I would like to know, I'd like to have a picture of what our capital uses.
Would you consider the bond spending as part of that? No? Because, I mean, we have transition of, I mean, a lot of our.
Bond has to be used for what we declare it.
Co- correct, but, uh, for example, we don't, we don't buy any technology, uh, equipment from capital. It's all purchased from the bond.
From the bond, right. That's what I'm saying. I'm not, I'm not, I'm not, the bond has to be used for what the bond is, is declared for. So I'm not even talking about bond funds. I'm talking, I'd like to know if we're using other funds, RNO, or any other funds we're using for capital purchases.
Okay.
And if so, why are we using those instead of capital in order to have a shortfall? That, that's what I, it's just kind of a look at what, what our capital spending is and where those resources are coming from. I also would like to know exactly how large our liability is for, uh, since we're allowing the, it sounds to me like we're allowing a continuous rule over a fleet.
Yeah, I would like.
I'd like to know what our current liability is and what our, I'd like to know what policy language we have is allowing that kind of, um, because in my opinion, that, that's, that is, uh, well, I'm not gonna say what in my opinion that is, but we, we need to know what that picture is because that thing's significant.
Oh, it, it, it is, and we booked that in our cap for it.
And it could be, and it could be crippling if we ever had something happen, we would have had to.
Like being, anything like that.
Well, if we had, it, it doesn't mean we, other one, it's just a few, a few of the, of those who have a large balance.
Now, I agree.
You know, I mean, it's.
And that comes in waves because you have that.
People, they get to a group, they all retire and, or they all leave and.
You know, like they all retire.
Now, it's not that we, we couldn't take away a benefit, it's already existed, so we couldn't sweep, but wouldn't stop. Um, the other thing is, I, you gave me a file years ago when I went in, uh, at my trip, it was, no, I must have been on board, it would have been to me otherwise. I would like a Excel file with all employees with their base pay. I want an Excel file with all addenda.
Next to their name, like if that employee gets addenda, that's the total.
That's what the file is. I'd like to see that. That's the filing if you make a book. Um, and, and all other pays. So if there's anything other than addenda, like any additional pays.
So, uh, but, so, e- everything that we would consider compensation for them, so base pay, addenda, or any other compensation?
Maybe other additional pays, correct.
Okay. And for, uh, what period of time do you want me to, do you want it from last year or this year?
I want to know currently, right now, what are we paying?
Well, we wouldn't know what they were done last year in addendas too.
Well, whatever their current is, I mean, and do you get the addenda one time that's related? It'll be a part.
Last year or current?
So for, for last school year, total of last school year, like we're descending now, so if you're gonna give them the.
Fifteen, sixteen, sixteen, seventeen.
So two school years.
Sixteen, sixteen, seventeen.
Well, no, sixteen, seventeen.
That's why that, that's, I guess what I'm trying to figure it out to him was like criteria for addendas too. So that's been a.
Okay, well, if, if the sixteen, seventeen school year, and then if there's really, are you attending any adjustments for the new year? But we don't know those, we don't know the word yet. That's why I was saying.
That's why, so one.
Other than one percent, because I can add one percent just once we.
Do we project addendas into our budget?
What's that?
The what, the budget we're looking at now? Like, do you have money allocated to pay addendas this year in the budget?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay, so, uh, all employees.
Same thing we gave you before, ask the position. So, or will that list include, um, for instance, a coach who is not an employee, they're, but they're only a coach with the, sorry, I hate to use the word only, but their only position with our district is that a, a coach that receives an addenda? Will they be on that sheet? Would they be on that Excel spreadsheet, Jim?
The, um, this would include everybody that we paid as a salary, right? So if we paid anybody, um, as a, as a ten ninety-nine vendor is what we call them, you know, as a contracted service, it would not be included.
Okay, but if they got paid as a salary?
We, uh, typically, yes. We actually have a couple of creative ways that we pay coaches, but I'd really rather not get into. We don't pay them, they get paid. I think it's probably the better way to say it.
Well, then, as I'd have known, I could have asked it at the football meeting last month. I could have said, how do you get paid?
I have.
Sometimes it's through the I A, sometimes it's through tax credit.
Mr. Matherino, I'm, on the maintenance and operations fund, I have this expenditure summary that I wouldn't believe that's, that just comes off the budget for one. Can we have the employee benefits or, or is it easy to divide those employee benefits out in the certified and classified categories? Or is that a difficult task?
No, it's, uh, it, we would probably, we could, we could break it out. Um, I mean, just for kind of a rule of thumb, uh, it's, it would be broken up essentially on the percentage.
I just want, and that's fine, then never mind, I'll do the math myself. Thank you.
I just wanted to make sure that I, I, there were a couple of conversations that were going on. You also, I think, asked for the process for receiving an addenda, correct?
Yeah, like how do we determine who's eligible or who's not, or what falls in and out of? I mean, some things are obvious if you coach and you were hired to be a teacher, because that's like an entirely different job you're doing. But, um, I, I guess when we determine with, with the people that are specifically like exempt employees, um, you know, and certified with their contract amount, how do we determine like what's going to fall under professional responsibility or, or other responsibilities assigned and what falls outside of that and then more and such?
Right, so when is it tipping to?
Yeah.
Okay, anything else that, uh, I, I can share? Uh, any, any input on the timeframe, the dates work for everybody?
We love the dates.
I think we were probably going to end up, once we get this information, needing to meet again if we were going to.
Well, we're gonna have a meeting on the reclassification, so can we have, could that maybe be maybe about reclassifications and budget?
So that we don't restrain ourselves, yeah.
Have multiple discussions.
Yeah, we're gonna have to.
I would have to agree with you, Mrs..
I'm sorry that you have to agree with me.
I do agree with you. I don't have to.
Wow. You could have agreed with me, I'm not gonna quit agreeing with you.
Okay, so, um.
You were all ready.
Okay, so does anybody, we have, uh, we do have an additional half hour. If there's anybody that actually has something that's gonna be beneficial at this moment. Otherwise, we do have graduations to get prepared for and get our tails over there, and I would like to comb my hair.
It'd be nice to keep on, should I have a? We'll, we'll all receive those in a week or two. The list of, we'll all receive those in a week or two, like what's the timeframe roughly, you can have some of those? I know it's a very comprehensive list, so.
I, I don't, I don't think, um, I don't think there would be anything that would prohibit us from getting this to you by a week from today.
Awesome. One is an Excel file, because I can't download.
I'm buy, I'm buying Jim a car.
I was gonna say, try not to.
I'm gonna get him a new car.
I think Dr. Vee, I think Dr. Vee hurt his neck in that.
Wow, no, it can be.
I was just waiting for the reaction from the corner of the room and.
Oh, I can't, I can't see her though.
She's already had some giggles over there.
Maybe, maybe what we should do, uh, Kim's trying to make a list, Jim's been making notes, I have as well. We're gonna try to put that all together in the first of next week. We're gonna send you the list. So you guys look at it, make sure that what you asked for is on there and we didn't.
Miss anything.
Miss anything.
I won't be answering emails till Tuesday. I don't even have time to sleep these days, so.
Our kids are still on campus till, till Monday.
And then it goes, great graduation and I'm moving classrooms, so.
Oh, wow.
And I have schoolwork.
So you think we're done?